Just got off the phone with him, so he's there. Okay, so, Justin, oh, there you are, Justin. Glad to see you today. Justin's gonna share the high school's trial case.
Well, I didn't need, didn't think we'd get to go so early.
Oh, there, she's on mute.
All right, everybody there, everybody good? I don't know if Susan can hear me or not.
I can, finally.
Great. Well, thanks for having us here this afternoon. Ms. Crane has joined me. And she is going to share a little bit. We thought it would be great. We've got a group of students, our Youth in STEM Club has been doing some fantastic things and working with some students in the elementary school. So we thought it would be great to start your meeting off with a little bit of share on this. So I know that I think Liv's gonna need the ability to share her screen. And then we will roll from there. So I will let Liv take it from there. Liv, thanks for being here with us today.
Thanks, yeah. Can y'all hear me okay? Awesome. I have never shared a video before, so I'll give a quick introduction and then hopefully it won't take too much for me to figure out how to share the video and the sound with you. Otherwise, I can just email you a link and you can watch the video. So, the Youth in STEM Club at Pullman High School started last year. And it was really the idea of a couple of juniors that are really interested in STEM fields, mostly math and science. A young woman who I met on the math team had the idea for the club and she was really inspired just to get students doing hands-on STEM activities at a young age. And specifically, it was a group of young women that were like, we have seen a lot of people like us doing coding and engineering challenges and things like that. And so they put the club together and honestly, it was my first year teaching at Pullman High School and it was all online learning and it was kind of a tough year. And the Youth in STEM students were like some of the most inspirational kids that I interacted with last year. And it really gave me energy to keep going because they had their cameras on in Zoom meetings and they were willingly engaging in discussion and planning cool stuff and not letting, not letting the pandemic stop them. So it was really one of the brightest spots of my school year last year. And I'm so excited to continue working with them this year in person. And they've so this year so far, they've well, last year they partnered with two teachers at Sunnyside and they brought an awesome virtual experience to Ms. Stope and Ms. Holman's classroom, doing some like a coding simulation with third and fourth graders. And it was really wonderful. And this year so far, let me look at my list. They have done an activity with Ms. Harbor's STEM class at Jefferson, also with Ms. Martinson and Ms. Dummett at Jefferson. And upcoming, later this week or next week, they're gonna be in Mrs. Conley's class at Franklin. And so it looks like, I think Camiak is the one school that we've yet to hit, but they're really ambitious students. They're planning awesome and engaging activities and really enjoying just interacting with the younger kids. So they put together a quick video sharing just some of their memories and experiences that I'd love to share with you. This is where we might get in trouble. So let's see how this works. Okay. So, can y'all see my screen, okay?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, so the volume is a thing that I don't know. The video is kind of quiet. So I'll hit play and we'll see if we can hear Yi Chang as she's talking outside of our bulletin board. Let's see. Maybe give me a thumbs up if y'all can hear it. No sound at all, or just quiet?
It's, it's just quiet.
Okay. How do I? Well, if it's just quiet, maybe we'll just all be really quiet and we'll try to hear it. And then I can send you the link. So maybe it will come through better if you want to watch again. It's just a minute long. I think hers is the quietest and the other kids get a bit louder, so. So we'll see. Okay. So this is our club president, Yi Chang. She's a senior this year. Okay, so the sound was pretty bad the whole time, but I will say, I will send you all the link for this video. So that's all I have for y'all today, but thank you for watching.
Liv, Liv, they looked very excited and they're all wearing their masks appropriately. And we can go on and watch it. So we'll, we'll, we'll take that. So Liv, thank you very much for, for sharing that. And I know, you know, talking with some folks at the elementary schools, they're very excited that, that we're having high schools coming down and doing this, this positive interaction. And like Liv mentioned, having some positive role models that, that represent all of our, all of our students in that, in that role is, is really fantastic. So. And appreciate Liv for all that she does for us. Again, just, you know, this is her second year with us, but runs a lot of clubs and does a lot of things to help kids not only during the day, but also outside of school. Volunteers for lots of things, including this. So Liv, thank you very much for your time and for for being a part of this. And then like she shared the, shared the video there, so I'll check it out later. So Liv, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for taking the time to share with us. It's exciting to see the older kids working with the younger kids. So, well done. Thank you. So next is our PLC conference training, right? And learning and unit planning. It's Roberta.
It's Roberta.
Yeah, we'll just do that.
I was thinking back to the last year, I remember the students from that club connected with me and said, this is where we really want to go be with the other kids. And at that time, we just couldn't say yes to that. And I'm so glad that that didn't curb their enthusiasm. I mean, because I knew, you know, I suggested, maybe you try video, you know, do something. And they did it. I mean, they were, they're really committed to that cause and just really proud of those kids. So, we're gonna go through a professional development session that none of you were able to attend because we were in a work session that night around high, around six, 12 math. So anyway, Janelle Keating is going to take us through just that firming up for all of us. Why PLC, what the attributes are, what, you know, critical pieces are to it. And we had sent you the introduction to this book. Just so you know, there will be another session next week on Wednesday that I think I already sent forwarded the invite to you. It's in the morning, but again, we'll get the recording. So it's not like, oh, if I don't take advantage of that, no, we'll get to, we'll, and we actually get to warehouse these recordings in our district. So that's a very positive thing as well. So with that, I think that Janelle does not require a lot of introduction. She's the superintendent at the White River School District, a longtime expert in professional learning communities and was a principal and worked in the district office and now has become the superintendent at White River. And it's just, it's just the way White River works. And so it's a great example of, of how to, to make this something that isn't just a school experience, it's an entire district experience. And so with that, Courtney, are you there? Okay, she's gonna get the video started and then there's gonna be some natural stopping points.
Do you all see my screen? And is it big or small?
Big.
Big, okay. Just a sound check. Did everybody hear the sound? Nobody hear sound?
Just hear sound.
I know there are
Do you hear it now?
districts that have newborn members since the November election that will be joining us for the first time. So there's a couple of pieces that I will revisit this time in a, in pretty much the same way I visited the last time. I am Janelle Keating-Hambly and I'm, am the superintendent in the White River School District in Buckley, Washington. And I'm also one of the co-authors of the two books that you're seeing in front of you. Leading PLCs that work district-wide. And also there is a planned book that goes along with that particular text. I'm also honored tonight that Megan Rhodes, one of the co-authors, is also joining us and will be listening in and Megan's always full of good suggestions, so we may call on her periodically if she wants to weigh in. Also, January, we celebrate our board members with a focus on their work in schools. So I'm here tonight to tell you thank you. I too have a board meeting tonight. So when I'm finished up here, I'll be going across the parking lot into the boardroom where we will continue to do our work as well. Now, we have a couple of, like three pretty big targets tonight. The first thing we're gonna do is really revisit the three ideas of a professional learning community. The three big ideas, the three big ideas that your teams inside your districts, that guiding coalition is working on right now. We're also gonna take a look at some leadership assumptions, assumptions to improve learning. And those leadership assumptions were nested in the introduction of the book. We won't hit every leadership assumption tonight, but we will tackle a couple of those. And also, you're gonna have some time tonight, your district guiding coalition has been learning. They've been attending workshops. They've been working back in the district based on what they were learning in the workshops. And we want to give them an opportunity to share with the board tonight. So we'll have a time at the end where your own district will be weighing in. A number of times throughout the presentation, I'm gonna just take five minutes to stop and allow you to interact. If you're in a boardroom, you can interact in that boardroom. But if you're not in the boardroom, maybe interacting through a text message with your superintendent based on something that you're learning. So we'll have an opportunity to stop, to think about things and to debrief a little bit as we go through the workshop tonight. Now, when your district signed on to do this work, basically, they signed on to ensure academic equity district-wide. By doing this work, we wanted to, to ensure equity by implementing a guaranteed and viable curriculum district-wide. So basically selecting those essential standards, pacing them out in a way that all kids could learn the essential standards. And your districts are determining essential standards right now. That's actually a big goal of year one. We also know that we will ensure equity if we have a timely and balanced assessment system in place. Basically, how are we checking along the way? As a board, you wanna be asking that question, are the kids learning and how do we know? So that timely and balanced assessment system will give that information to us. It'll also give information to the teachers and the kids about what the kids are learning or what pieces need to be revisited. Also, by doing this work, we're gonna ensure equity because you know what? We're gonna plan for the kids that we have sitting in our seats right now. We're gonna provide them the additional time and support that they need to be successful. During this project, we're gonna also ensure equity by addressing standards-based reporting and grading practices. And in a couple of months, they will have an entire day where we're gonna learn about best practice when it comes to, to reporting and grading. And then also, we're gonna close up this year of learning, talking about with Dr. Anthony Mohammed, how do we build an inclusive and healthy district and school culture? Now, the big piece about this is doing this work district-wide, you have to ask the question, can we actually put the systems in place to accomplish this work? If we truly want to ensure equity, there are a number of pieces here that we have to focus our time, our energy and our resources on. Now, the key piece is that can we really act with urgency to ensure that every student is given what they need when they need it? So think about that. Some of you have children in your schools, maybe grandchildren in your schools. The staff, the principals, the district office, the superintendent, the board. Are we acting with urgency to ensure that every student is given what they need when they need it? That's basically a big piece of that definition of equity. Now, I want you tonight to just, if you have something to write on, maybe there's just a, maybe you have a notepad next to you. As I'm talking and we are looking at some of these slides and learning from the slides, I want you just to take some notes. Maybe there's something that's resonating with you, something that you want to remember to discuss when you have time with the board and, and your superintendent. Maybe you have that introduction of the chapter in front of you and you highlighted a few things. Go ahead and go back to that when we have the, the discussion time. But this is make, take notes. This is informal. We want to have a conversation after each one of these assumptions. Now, when we were writing this book, Dr. Bob Aker is, has been my co-author and is one of the original architects of the professional learning community concepts and practices. Mike Agarom worked in our office as the deputy superintendent and Megan Rhodes worked in the office, in our assessment office, as the assessment director. And when we were doing this work, we said, you know what? If we want to be serious about improving learning for the students across the school district, we have to move beyond improving schools one at a time. We need, need to do this work from a district perspective. And I'm gonna give you some examples tonight of what's happening in the districts that have signed on to be part of this PLC Wassa project. Now, again, when we began thinking about a professional learning community, there are three big ideas, right? And there are really three ideas that focus on why a school district actually exists. We exist to ensure learning for kids. So the first big idea is it's gonna be a relentless focus on learning. Relentless, passionate focus on learning. That's when you might ask the question, you know, learn what? And your teams right now in your districts are working on determining essential standards. Maybe they've decided to work on ELA and math. Some districts are going beyond that and tackling some of the content areas. So that passionate and relentless focus on learning. The second big idea in a professional learning community is that focus on collaboration. No longer are we gonna be working in isolation. You're going to have, if you teach first grade, you're gonna work with your first grade team. If you, maybe you're the only person that teaches first grade, we're gonna pair you with that kindergarten teacher. We're gonna determine what's essential in kindergarten. We're gonna discern, uh, determine what's essential in first grade. We're gonna talk about how we're gonna teach it, how we're gonna assess it. We're gonna look at our data together. If you're at the high school, maybe you're gonna be working with your ninth grade English team. Or maybe your algebra team. But no longer are we going to be working in isolation. And also, there's an intense and passionate focus on results. Basically, moving beyond, well, I taught it, the question is, did the kids learn it? And does anyone need additional time and support? That focus on results is gonna tell us what strategies actually work. Or what resources, those districts adopted resources, are we using them, number one, and are we seeing results using the lessons and the strategies that that resource provides? So again, in a professional learning community, we're gonna see big idea number one, that focus on learning, the focus on collaboration and an intense and passionate focus on results. Asking that question along the way, are the kids learning and how do we know? Now, as we get into the assumptions that you read about in the introduction, assumption number one is that the superintendent matters. And you're saying, Janelle, we know that. That's the main job of the, the board is to hire an effective superintendent. But in this case, and you're living it, by being part of this project, your superintendent publicly is taking responsibility for improving learning for all students inside the district. And for all adults, and we're taking it seriously, attending these trainings, doing the work in between the training. And we're gonna hit this a couple of times tonight, you're gonna want to know why are we doing this? Why this big focus for the superintendent? And we're doing this for two reasons. Number one, we want to improve the professional practice of every single adult in your system. All right, so that's part of the job of the superintendent, part of what the superintendent's taking responsibility for. And then we want to improve student learning for kids. We want more kids learning more and learning at higher levels. So your superintendent signed on for that. So round of applause for that as, as a great place to start. The second piece, as we move through this work and as a board, as you're approving those policies, I want you to be thinking and I want you to be asking, what's the actual impact on learning? Will this help all kids learn? So your superintendent is really taking a look policy by policy and aligning all those policies, those practices, like grading, some of those procedures with a mission of learning for all. Also, part of assumption number one is that the superintendent is going to, is gonna utilize the power of establishing a guiding coalition. Now, as part of this project, your guiding coalition, you have your superintendent, you have members inside your district office, a board member, association representation, teacher leadership likely, principal leadership, maybe a tech, technology, uh, staff member. But that guiding coalition is gonna be, the two main reasons we establish that guiding coalition is to build shared learning. These workshops they're attending month after month, they're learning together, that guiding coalition. And at the end of that workshop, they're talking about, okay, how are we going to advance this work in our district? And remember, year one is all about, we're gonna do a lot of shared learning. But when we hit May, as a board, you can say, okay, we want to see the essential standards in math. Maybe you're working on math and ELA. But we're going to have that shared learning and that shared leadership to accomplish this work. So that's the work of the guiding coalition. Also, and you might say, Janelle, this is obvious as well. Each superintendent has realized that the school really is only as good as the principal leading it. And Dr. Bob Aker is famous for saying, you know, people have to be as well off, at least as well off as the people they're trying to help. So during this particular project, especially in year two, but some in year one, we're building shared knowledge with that principal team. You have principals that are part of the guiding coalition. In some of the districts, we have all the principals as part of the guiding coalition. But if we don't, how do we take that shared learning and move it to our principal's meeting? Every single school district has meetings with their building principals. So as part of this, the principal needs, needs to be as knowledgeable and committed as the teacher team. Versus team, shoo, shoo, you go work on this, I have other things to do. We want that, we want to build the shared knowledge with the principal as well and the assistant principal. Also, that principal is going to be directed to organize their school into collaborative teams. That's pretty easy at an elementary school, the kindergarten team, the first grade team, the second grade team. Again, if you're from a small school, it may be a K-1 team, a 2-3 team, a 3-4 team. But the entire school is gonna be organized into collaborative teams. And then the principal, with the work of the district office, will be directing the work of those teams. Now again, and I'm gonna say this a number of times tonight, basically this year, it's determining those essential standards. Now, also, the work that these principals will be involved in, we always say it's the work that's layered under the four critical questions of learning. And I will get to that here in a minute. And some of you saw this the last time. So again, to recap here, just the superintendent knowing that this school, if we're going to improve learning for all the children in this school, we have to focus on that building leadership. We have to be their reciprocal accountability. We have to help them build shared knowledge, right? We have to help them organize their school into those collaborative teams. And we have to help them direct the work of improving learning, the work that's layered under the four critical questions. Now, finally, and this is a big piece. I want you to just take a look at this slide that the superintendents and the superintendents that are part of this project. So as we're doing this work and we're writing the book, we're researching what's happening all over the country. Looking at the research from a book called Raising the Bar, Closing a Gap. Looking at our, studying the research from Bob Marzano's book, District Leadership That Works. And one of the key pieces of this research was this slide right here where it says, finally, superintendents made a commitment to limit new initiatives. That the professional learning community's concepts and practices is not going to be one of many approaches to school improvement. It's going to be the approach to continuously improving learning across the district. So this, those, these questions, I'm gonna put it in front of you here in just a minute or so. There's a lot to work layered under there. There's enough for your district to work on this. I've been working on this for almost 20 years now. So really limiting your initiative and focusing on this research-based work of improving learning. Now, when we talk about, so what, Janelle, tell us more about the research-based work. And some of you may remember this slide from last time. The work really is framed under the four critical questions. And in our system, if we can't see where it fits, that's a filter that we use to say, you know what, we don't have time for that. We need to focus on this work. So let's just take a look and a little bit more of a deeper dive into question number one. Because that's where your teams are really centered right now. The first question we're going to ask is what do we expect our students to learn? What's absolutely essential in first grade math, second grade math, sixth grade English language art, seventh grade science? So we're going to determine what's essential. And we're gonna refer to those as the essential standards. Some districts refer to them as the power standard, some districts refer to them as priority standard. The bottom line is this is what's essential that we want kids at this grade level to learn. We're gonna promise their parents, we're gonna guarantee that. And guarantee is not a word we take lightly. Also, your teams are learning to break these standards into bite-sized pieces of instruction. Those bite-sized pieces of instruction that we refer to as learning targets, the instruction that will be happening every day in that classroom to ensure kids learn. We're gonna pace them out in a way that all kids can learn them, knowing that some students in some schools may need additional time and support. We're not gonna say, oh, they can't, they can't meet this standard. Versus, we're gonna make sure that we're allowing the appropriate amount of time to help our kids meet this standard. So this entire year, we're focused on question number one. We're gonna talk about what those standards look like in student work. Teams are already engaging and once they break those standards apart, let's pace them, let's talk about what strategies we're gonna use, what resources. That's the work layered under question number one. As we move into year two of this three-year project, next year, we're gonna be working on the assessment process, the timely and balanced assessment system. That, an assessment system that gives you information on your students in a way that you can actually respond to it, that you can give them the help that they need in a timely way. Year three of the project, we're gonna be working on question number four. Some of you are already trying to tackle question number four, but a word of caution here, very difficult to, that question number four says, how do we respond when students experience difficulty with, with their learning? We want to ensure that we're clear on what we expect kids to learn before we give them that additional time and support. So this determining what's essential is definitely the work in year one. And also, we're gonna have time in year three to talk about how do we extend learning for students? What does that look like in our district? So again, you can see all the work on this slide. There's enough work here and work, uh, for years and work for us to continue to refine. There's enough work here and work, uh, for years and work for us to continue to refine as we begin to collect data on our students and their learning. Now, alright, we've been talking for, I've been talking to you for a little over 20 minutes. Now it's time to take just a little bit of a break. And I want you to think about just that first assumption where the superintendent, um, matters a lot, right? That superintendent leadership, that we have to support the principals. And I want you to be thinking about what's resonating with you most about assumption number one. What questions or comments do you, uh, have to make regarding the work of your guiding coalition? Your guiding coalition in the district that's, that's participating in this work, this learning every single month, sometimes twice a month. This month might be three times a month. They're working with a district coach that's helping get this work accomplished. So we're just going to take five minutes and I'm going to ask the superintendents to lead that conversation. And again, if you're in a spot where you're not with your superintendent, many of you can send a text message to the superintendent, something that's resonating with you right now. Maybe a question that you have. How are we doing tackling those essential standards? So here we go, let's just take about five minutes.
Did you want to take the five minutes, Roberta? Oh, I think you're muted.
Yeah, we, we want to take five minutes and have a conversation.
And I started the timer.
Well, good.
Okay, so your thoughts about assumption number one?
See, Susan, you gave a thumbs up, but that wasn't a verbal, so let's, let's try to use our words tonight. Rather than hand signals or... So what comments, questions do you have? So we only have five minutes right now, so let's chat, because we haven't had a little, little time to chat lately.
Well, it seems to me a lot of this stuff is just a no-brainer. I mean, I haven't seen anything startling or new.
Well, I think with assumption number one, one of the things I've been pondering about, listening to it again, is, um, that guiding coalition and somehow looking at, thinking back, it would have been great if we had all the principals on the guiding coalition, because it's been very difficult when we only have some and making that connection with the other principals. And for various reasons, COVID, trainings, different things going on. And so it's been hard, I think, for the principals who have not been in deep into the training to kind of, they're, they're trying to catch up. And so if I had to do it again, somehow, some way I would have put all the principals in the guiding coalition, just a thought. Allison?
Thanks, and I'm going to deliberately be quiet because I have been sitting in on so many of the guiding coalition meetings. And so I'll just let other people who are getting this for the first time tonight talk. But, um, one impression I have is, would it be crazy to just start now? Um, introduce those other principals now? And, and then as I reread this, um, this idea of the superintendent, um, you know, I so often saw you, because these meetings are here in the district, having to get up to deal with a critical matter on your phone. And I wonder, um, if it would be possible to just have Joe in charge during the times when we're doing this work so that you could model that behavior of being focused that you want principals and other members of the team to do. So that's all I'm going to say, and I'm going to really try and be quiet for the rest of the time.
Well, I appreciate those comments. And please feel free to provide some comments since you've been participating. And, you know, I think that feedback is helpful. Interestingly enough, Roberta and I have had that conversation about getting all the principals on um, and trying to figure that out. And I do appreciate the comment because it, I'm supposed to be modeling and leading, and every time I get pulled out on a phone call or emergency, it does, it does impact that modeling and my expectations. And here I'm trying to tell the principals how important this is, yet I get up and leave the room. And so, um, I will be happy to talk to Joe about that. But I also say we've had some incredibly challenging things this week, which I'll update with you later at another time. But, um, yeah, so I appreciate that, Allison, very much.
Well, and it's funny that Bob brought that up, because I just had that, I was having that conversation with myself yesterday. That when we started this and maybe there was, there were pretty tight guidelines about who we could have and how many we could have. And I think that they kind of rethought some of that. And I think, but, and that was part of what we had to structure. It was based on how many people could we have in that guiding coalition? I don't think it would hurt at all for us to add the two elementary principals that aren't in it. We can't expand it to be so large that we have all the middle, or all the assistants. But I think we can, I think we can make some shifts there. Yeah.
And I think we have enough assistants and associates, we could spread out and have the principals there and not be interrupted, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Forward, I think you need to do it. Sorry, Nathan.
No, you're fine. Um, to Susan's point honestly, about it being a no-brainer. I mean, I think, like having, you know, if you read the article, the building leadership teams are kind of the blocks, you know, and the superintendent, you know, school board leadership team kind of decides the goals and then they pass it down. And not including a couple of the buildings is explicitly called out as a way to, you know, a kind of a path to failure, right? Because if the teachers and the groups are working, but the, the principal isn't really, you know, aware of how to support that work or where, what the work is or how it's going, it's, it's not really, it doesn't really work. And so, I mean, I think, you know, looking at the article and watching the video, it's definitely, for me, a no-brainer in the sense that like process governance or policy governance or, you know, like I deal with processes all the time and they're very useful, right? But like when you look at education, you know, there's a lot of pedagogy and opinion. And so it's, it's, you know, I get the whole concept of like, well, we all need to get on the same page. And it would be really nice to have plug and play almost, you know, where you could kind of move things around and know what's going on. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think just looking at the structure of the implementation, we all get on board with the, you know, the why, which I guess is what I'm trying to say is, as a school board member, I totally get it, right? But that the, you know, once we all get on board, it's required to have all the buildings, the leadership in step. Because if they're not, you know, they, and, and to the article's point of this has to be the only agenda item. It has to be the only, you know, initiative. Because if there's anything else going on, starts to muddy the waters as far as like what, what we're actually doing, right? And so, I mean, I, I, I think, yeah, getting the, at least one member of the building leadership, preferably the principal, would be, you know, according to the documentation, at least, uh, idea. And the dogs are, you know, wrestling next to me, I apologize.
And the timer went off. Oh.
See, I took up our last few minutes, so.
Okay.
Did you want to add anything? I don't want to leave you out of this five-minute session, so.
I, I definitely agree with everything that's been said. I guess I'm a little bit surprised that we have some principals that haven't been included. I wasn't aware of that. But it does very explicitly say a couple of screens ago, that shared knowledge as a principal needs to be at least as knowledgeable as the teachers during the work. So I think that that's some, you know, that's definitely a key aspect. And any leadership model is going to find itself far more successful if the leaders are participating equally as much as the people that they expect to be participating.
Yeah, and I think that we go back to when we were given that number and told who had to be on it. Our number ran up pretty quick. And so, but, and we've done, I think we've done a great job at like revisiting it with our principals, but it's not the same. And so we've got to change that, that's, we can change that, Bob, we got that.
And Roberta does have a plan in place, um, for all of them and many more team leaders as well to get the deeper um, training. So that is already set up for, uh, August, so.
We're going to have 21 people go to the PLC conference that we went to in Phoenix. We're going to take them to Seattle.
Yeah. And we will be big in bringing those principals on earlier than that, obviously, when we have our, um, admin meetings, so.
Yeah, well, and I think, Bob, we could probably bring them in to the next coalition meeting.
Yeah.
And in addition to adding the principals, I think that there needs to be a very explicit plan on how those principals are communicating the information to their assistants themselves. Uh, and to make sure that that is consistent with all of the assistants that we have in the district.
That's a really good point, yes. Okay, Courtney, are you there? I don't even know if you're there.
She's there.
I think maybe you went somewhere.
Just took a walk. Okay, you ready to start?
Yes, please.
I'm going to mute myself again, because I have cheerleading practice right outside the boardroom. So I'll see you the next break.
We'll come back at it after that. Now, we're going to move to assumption number two, so.
Just a sound check, can everyone hear the sound still? Okay, good.
If we want to improve the learning of every student across the district, we must understand our why. So we have to think about, you know, why should we work so hard to do all this work and align the work of every team every day? Well, the answer's clear. We're to, we're working to ensure high levels of learning for all of our students. Grade by grade, course by course, subject area by subject area, unit by unit, lesson by lesson, skill by skill, and name by name. We're talking about every student learning what's essential at their grade level, in the course that they're in, in the particular subject in that grade level. So that's why we're, we're working so hard. And again, I want to go back to the verbs. Notice the verb ensure. Okay, another powerful verb versus things like give them, giving them the opportunity. This is way beyond giving them the opportunity. We're putting the systems in place to ensure that our students learn grade level standards and above, right? That they're growing. Now, also, we have to think about it, part of this is really, and we're, when we began to look at by name and by need, what do our students need? We're motivating and inspiring each other, because this is really our district mission statement. You might ask the question, does your district mission statement answer why do we exist? Like, why does this school district exist? Well, your school district exists to ensure learning for every single child. Your superintendent signed on to improve learning for every single student in the district. Your principals signed on to ensure every learning for every student in their school and to help other principals ensure the learning inside their school. And our teachers, ensuring learning in their classroom and as, as part of a team. So we're going to motivate and inspire each other to be talking about by name of the child and their need, their content area, their standards, the skills we're looking at. So always going back to the why. And again, I want to challenge you, go look at your mission statement. Does it answer the question, why do we exist? Do you exist to ensure high levels of learning for all students? And again, that why is not so that they're good at school. The why is so that they can be successful beyond high school, so that they can be college and career-ready. Now, again, and this is a, a big piece of your work in the community, is when someone asks, so why are we doing this work of a professional learning community? Why did we sign on to this three-year project? Well, number one, you signed on because you want to improve instruction, the first best instruction in the classroom. We call that tier one. So we want to improve instruction in the classroom. And we can improve instruction by improving the professional practice of all the adults. If I'm working with my collaborative team and Candace is getting better results than I am, we're taking a look at that data and I'm asking Candace, tell me what you did. How did you teach that? What resources did you use? Will you show me? We're going to improve the professional practice of the adults by the power of that collaborative team. Alright, so the first two reasons, improve tier one instruction, improve the professional practice of the adults, and ensure that more students learn grade level standards and above. Every single school, every single classroom. We have to ask ourselves, are the kids growing? Now, this is a piece that, and we're going to take again it another few minutes after we take a look at this slide. But part of your why, you know, why you're doing it, to improve learning, to improve the professional practice of the adults. The kids aren't going to learn more until the adults learn more. But then you have to engage in what is your data telling you, alright? What's your student achievement data telling, telling us, telling you and your, your, your team there with the board and superintendent, your district office and your schools? Right now, many of us are taking a look at our data from the pandemic. We have our smarter balanced information back. We can see how we compared to the state results, how the state did. So you have student achievement data, really looking back at the last three or four years. What does that tell you? How about your attendance? Data. We have schools that are looking at this every Monday morning. Your discipline data. Even the areas where we're having difficulties, is it the bathroom? Is it the parking lot? We're identifying key locations around the school where these incidences are taking place. Also, what's happening on the buses? We have best practice on our buses, but likely not on every bus. So where are those write-ups coming from? And then how do we help our drivers address those particular issues? Today, we spent about two hours in the district really looking at our demographic data from some of our unit assessments in English language arts and math. What does that look like for our EL learns? What does that look like for our students that receive special education? What does that look like for our Native American students? So we're looking at our demographic data, breaking it down, again, kid by kid, skill by skill. Or you might say by name and by need. Also, what does your graduation rate tell you? And are we graduating kids with skill? That's the big piece. We all know what it's going to take to buy a home right now. So these kids have to leave our system with skills, college and career-ready. And you likely have other data that you could add to this particular list. So we're going to go into just another five-minute break. And I want you to have that discussion. Maybe some of you are going to get a, if you're not there, maybe you can get a, a call going, conference call, to be able to talk about how are, what is our student achievement data telling us? Not only from the, during the pandemic time, but before. How about attendance, discipline? And right now, we know that we're likely seeing, and while we know we are seeing more discipline incidences than prior to the pandemic. How are your demographic groups doing? Your students that fit into that particular demographic group? So we're going to go ahead. And again, we want you to take some time as a superintendent and a board and really talk about, are we clear on our why? Are we clear on articulating our why? Do folks in the community know how we're doing? And does that mission statement answer why do we exist? And why are we doing this work? For your staff in the building, are we clear that we're investing in them? That we're investing in them as professionals? That we're investing in their professional practice in an effort to get more students to learn more? So we're going to go ahead now. And superintendent, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and lead this discussion for the next five minutes. Where are we on assumption number two with establishing that why?
And the timer is running.
He's gone.
I'm back, I have to keep going, unmuting myself, muting myself, so. Um, well, you know, looking at why are we doing this work? You know, we talked about, um, our goals, our vision as a district. We talked about, um, the superintendent's goals. And, you know, closing that achievement graph, which involves all students. And it really fits in. I mean, improving our best instruction, really improving that professional practice of all our staff and ensuring that our students learn those grade level standards. And I think this is spot on, uh, uh, an initiative that everyone can buy into. And already, just listening and sitting in on, uh, collaborative teams, grade level teams or content teams at the high school in particular, where I was at the last, um, time we had work set aside for our, our staff. The quality and focus of the conversations have probably been the best that I've ever seen in the district. Really talking about. Really talking about learning, talking about why this particular standard is essential or maybe not essential. Why does it have an enduring component to it? How are we assessing this? To the point that some of our teams are wanting to go right into year two and year three. And we're like, whoa, whoa, let's, you know, let's all get on the same page here and make sure we get the foundation set right. So I'm really excited about this work. I really think this is gonna contribute. And this has led into that data, data conversation. And this week I had, or last week, I had the opportunity to talk with Lori Curtis, who's their executive director of, well, curriculum and instruction, but she also takes care of their data warehouse. And so I really wanted to learn more about how White River, what data warehouse system do they use or have they developed? And it's kind of a combination that they've kind of created some for their common assessments for the grade level teams. So they can, teachers enter the work or the numbers, the data, and then it's ready for them automatically calculated in Excel spreadsheets for them to look at when they meet. As far as S-VAC data and other data from outside, from Skyward, they still are in a similar situation to us about how we can pull that efficiently and effectively. They've explored what we call CAN data warehouse. But there's none out there that they found that will do all the things we want it to do. And I think that's pretty common from the districts I've been talking to. But we're continuing to take a look at how we can either replicate some pieces of that or how we can possibly engage Skyward a little bit better to help pull that information quickly and efficiently, effectively for our staff. So they're not spending time, especially our principals, trying to figure out how to pull that, what chart to put it in. So one of my goals this spring is to continue that focus on a data warehouse or a system that's more efficient and effective and not taking a lot of labor-intensive time to pull together and put together. So that's something that we're continuing to take a look at. So I'll open it up to other comments or thoughts or questions.
I know that we've talked about the data warehouse in the past. And I think that that's definitely gonna be something that once we get it off the ground is gonna be really helpful in being able to keep all of our data in one place and more accurately. I was just curious, Bob, have you engaged our tech department at all in trying to look into some sort of data warehouse as well? Or are you kind of leading the way on that?
Yeah, we, I've talked to them a little bit to really focus on the backside of it. In White River, their tech team plays a little bit, but they found that it's, it's really hard for them to take the lead on it because they're not used to how the data should look. They're more in the backside of the foundational pieces. So they found that it's, why they have them as part of the team, they really do more of the, how do you pull from Skyward and put it into an Excel spreadsheet, then they take it from there. Because tech seems to, they don't know all the nuances of the work or what it should look like, but they can do some of the background pieces. So I have talked with them. Garen's on vacation right now. He'll be coming back. I will be setting up another meeting with our TOSA team and Roberta to talk with Lori Curtis from White River. She has developed some training modules that she's willing to just share with us of how, what they've built in Excel spreadsheets and Google. I think they call it, they're not Google Forms. There's another title to it, but.
Google Suite.
Google Suite, thank you. And so they've been working, like Janelle said, for over 20 years. I think Lori's been there about 10. And I actually, Lori used to work for me in Bethel. And so I know her very well, and she's a very talented lady on the tech side of how to pull things together instructionally. So she's offered to help us. Take a look at what they've put together and we can, we can change it, we can copy it, we can learn from their mistakes and kind of what they're working on in the future. And so she's probably got the best grasp on where we probably need to go and how we can save some time starting it up rather than starting from scratch. So we have, we'll be talking with our tech team. And we're also talking about, they have a Chromebook distribution system that is pretty slick. And so we've been, our tech team has built one. It works sort of well. But again, we were in an emergency crisis last year just dispersing things. We want to move forward with a more comprehensive checkout, check-in system, which we initially have set up for Spartan Startup and Greyhound Gear Up, where when they come to register, we're just gonna issue them the Chromebook for the duration of their middle school or high school career. And it's, we've got, I think, a great system set up for that. But for the elementaries, we're working on a little bit of a different system. So I think that's been helpful in getting tech to maybe help with the behind-the-scenes structure and then really looking at our TOSA's and teaching and learning to really take a look at the hands-on Excel spreadsheets. Putting together, and Lori's put together a lot of training videos, step one, step two, step three, that we can, we can borrow to help set that up, if that's what we choose to do, so.
Okay, Bob, your time, time's up.
Well, I took all the five minutes, so next time, somebody else gets to take five. All right, Courtney, I'm gonna go mute myself again.
All right, assumption number three is really clarity perceived competence. So even if we expect our leaders to align the work from the district office to the classroom, if the success is gonna be determined by common understanding, we need clarity of what we expect everyone in the system to do. So I want to take you back to question number one for a minute, even clarity in vocabulary. So when we're determining what's absolutely essential, we want to make sure that if it's an essential standard, we're calling it an essential standard across the district versus one school calling it a priority standard, and one school calling them power standards. So let's determine the vocabulary that we're going to use and then also clarity on how those standards were selected and the process that we went through to determine those essential standards. The same thing is true when we move to the assessment piece. We'll have some assessment literacy to do with your staff. So making sure that we have clarity regarding what we expect everyone to do. So we're talking about that team by team, task by task. So task by task right now is really determining essential standards, building that common understanding of the how, that common vocabulary. And that's gonna help us create that foundation for the work that we have ahead. Now, we know that clarity also involves being clear and concise about your expectations. Now, notice I didn't say requirements. I don't have any requirements in the district. But I do have expectations about what it means to be an educator. An expectation about what we have to do to ensure, what the adults have to do to ensure learning for students. I know a number of the districts. I know that Cheney has worked on collaboration expectation. I know that West Valley Spokane is working on collaboration expectation. There are a number of other districts. They want to be clear. When those teachers come to the table, what's the expectation for that hour, right? Everyone's being paid. We want to make sure that we have an impact. And being clear and concise regarding our expectations is gonna make a difference. When we go to determine essential standards, being clear and concise about our expectations of the process will give everyone an opportunity to have ownership in those standards that were, that happened to be selected. So again, clarity perceived competence. Now, I want to just take a minute here and just tell a West Valley story because I happened to have the opportunity to be working with West Valley for just a short, little bit of time today. And they were telling me about determining their essential standards. They put a process together in their elementary schools at this point, working with the secondary as well. But they're working to determine essential math standards. They used a process that we highlighted in the book. Imagine this, they have, say you teach second grade, they have the second grade standard on the left-hand side, all right? And the schools across the top. And every school has an opportunity to weigh in whether they believe those standards, which standards from the left-hand side are absolutely essential. These are the standards that we're going to guarantee. And then we can look across school by school and see the schools that have decided, yes, we believe that's an essential standard too. Or no, we don't, and we're gonna set up a process to talk about. Here's what we all have in common, and here are some pieces that we think are outliers. Let's talk about those outliers. So again, clarity to expectation, clarity to process will lead you to ownership of this work. Versus many of us, I mean, this is year 35 for me. And I can't tell you, when I was a young teacher, the number of times I know the district office sent me things, gave me things that would have improved what I was doing in the classroom, but I really didn't have any ownership to it. I'd find it at the end of the year when it was in my mailbox. I'd open it up, I'd look at it and think, wow, this would have helped me if I would have engaged in it. But we're giving these teams an opportunity to engage in this work right now. And that's part of what your guiding coalition is doing also, learning together, discussing together, and talking about what it then means for their, for their particular school district. Now, we're gonna move on to assumption number four, all right? Some of you read about this in the book, where we talked about assumption number four is really aligning what we're simultaneously loose and tight about, all right? Now, effective superintendents create a culture that gives focus and direction to the tasks at hand, right? While at the same time encouraging empowerment, autonomy, and creativity. So think about just that story I shared about West Valley Spokane, where yes, there's direction to that task. We need to determine essential standards. They put a process in place that would empower those grade-level teachers and teams to weigh in, all right? On what was going to be essential at their grade level and in their content area. And then working on that at the secondary as well. So there's some things that you're gonna want to be tight on. We're gonna talk about type this time. Next time I meet with you, we'll talk about some of those things that teams have more autonomy, some things that we're looser, we will be looser on. I don't know if that's a word, looser, but we will have more, there will have more autonomy. Now, so Dr. Rick DeFor was Dr. Bob Aker's original partner when they started doing this work, implementing this work of a professional learning community. And basically, Dr. DeFor would tell you, there's some things that you just have to be tied on. Notice I have the tight part, it's bolded like the others, but it's much bigger. So here are the parts that in this work, we're gonna work to be tied on. Number one, we're gonna organize the district and our schools into collaborative teams. And those teams are gonna take collective responsibility for improving student learning rather than working in isolation. So we're gonna organize the districts. We're gonna be tight on that. This is something that you can talk about after the session. The second thing that we're gonna be tied on is that these collaborative teams are gonna implement a guaranteed and viable curriculum, unit by unit. So they're gonna take that essential standard, that guaranteed standard, or that list, the list of standards, and they're gonna pace them out over the school year. Here's what's taught in September. Here's what we believe needs to be taught in October, or November, or December. And remember again, we're saying these are not kind of, you gotta glance at them, standards, nice-to-know standards. We're saying these are the guaranteed standards for this grade-leveler course. So the teams are gonna implement those guaranteed standards, unit by unit. Even in a CTE course, you're gonna have to narrow those standards to what's absolutely essential for the kids to learn. Then we're gonna be tight on that we're gonna monitor that student learning through frequent team-developed, common formative assessments. We're gonna check for understanding along the way. We're gonna give kids feedback along the way. These checks for understanding are gonna give teachers information whether the strategies they're using in the classroom are making a difference for kids. We're gonna be tight on that. Also, we're gonna use those common assessments to improve our practice. If kids are doing well, our strategies are working, the resources are working, the time we're allotting to the particular standard, it's making a difference. We're gonna see if it actually helps us achieve our goals. But we're gonna, we know that some students, those common assessments will give us information that we need to intervene. We need to give kids additional time and support. Or we have kids, students, that we need to extend their learning. And we're gonna be tight on that piece. And that every school is going to have a systematic process for intervention and enrichment or extension during the school day. If kids can get help early in the morning, if kids can stay after school, many of you have after-school programs, that's a bonus. But it's very difficult to direct a student before or after school because some of the kids can't get there. Some of the students are riding a bus. Some of your students are going off to jobs or family responsibilities. So we're going to ensure that students in need will get their needs met during the school day versus hoping they can get help at home, or hoping that they can arrive early or stay late. Now, I want you to take a look up there. There's the five bullets again, all right? So we're gonna organize into collaborative teams. We're gonna implement a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We're gonna monitor the student learning through those common formative assessments that the teams will create. And remember, that assessment work is really in year two. We're gonna use those assessments as information. Basically, information to the teacher and to the team, whether our strategies are working, whether we need to intervene for kids, give them the extensions that they need to continue learning. And we're gonna ensure that this is gonna happen during the school day. Now, if Rick were here, he'd tell you, you don't get to pick one out of five or three out of five and feel good about what you're doing. You must do five out of five of these things deep and well, all right? So again, when we go back to that, so what are we going to be tight on? We're gonna organize into collaborative teams. We're gonna implement the guaranteed and viable curriculum. That's why we're working so hard this year in determining those essential standards. We're gonna monitor the learning through the assessment process. We're gonna have a timely way of answering the question, are the kids learning and how do we know? All right? And we're gonna ensure that our students are gonna, going to get their additional time and support during the school day based on that assessment information. Now, I want to just talk a little bit. I'm gonna take you on a little field trip here for a few minutes because I've been talking to, and each of you has a district coach. We've been talking about ensuring that each district has a place to house this important work. Your teachers, when we're determining the essential standards, we need a place to put those essential standards. Here's kindergarten math, first grade math, second grade math. So for us, and so we're going to, whether it's a Google site or another spot that you're going to have, we want to make sure that we capture all of this work related to the guaranteed and viable curriculum. So I'm gonna take you on just a little field trip inside the White River School District. This is on the back end of our system, and you can see where this important work is housed. So here we go. Oops, gonna make me sign in here. All right, so this is the landing page on the backside. We call it the work because it is all the important work for improving learning is housed here. And I'm gonna click open to the elementary. So if you see this site, if I scroll up, guess what you're gonna see? The four critical questions of learning books and all of the important work layered underneath. And we know, again, question number one, determining those essential standards, that's the work that we're working on in the project this year. Now, if I hover around the ELA, or I could go to math, or, you know, music, or science, there's a number of things I'm going to find there. I'll find the standards that our teams determine essential. I'll find the standards that our teams determined are essential. I'm going to find some important instructional resources that will help us advance those standards. I'm going to see some skeleton plans. Basically, everything that this team needs to advance the work of this standard is housed in that plan. They're going to add to it based on the needs of their kids. We're also going to see some of the district data, unit by unit. So if I go into the essential standards, take a look right here, you're going to see for kindergarten, we have our essential standards listed. For ELA, you're going to see first grade, the essential standards listed. So imagine that you have a parent that's new to your district, that they arrive at one of the elementary schools, and they have a first grader. They can sit down and say, you know what, what's absolutely essential in reading, in writing, in speaking and listening for my child? The principal will be able to show them, these are the things that we're going to guarantee this year. And we're going to continue on into grade two, grade three. Now, this site also will house, I'm going to go back inside here again, will house the unit skeletons, there's places for each school to add their work. So be working with your superintendent, be helpful, talk about where can we house this? Because all the work that your guiding coalition and your teacher teams are doing, it's important work, it's the work of improving learning, and we do not want to lose it. When we first started this work, gosh, twenty years ago, this work was placed in a binder. And maybe Candace was the team leader, and she got married and moved away to another district. Candace took her binder with her, and we're like, oh, we did that work, but Candace has the binder. We don't want that anymore. We want to ensure that it's housed in an organized way, that there's naming protocols so that we can find things. So everything that we need is inside this site. That's something in our system that we're tight on, alright? That we're going to have this house for the guaranteed and viable curriculum, that this work is valuable to us. And we're constantly going, we have a meeting coming up where we're going to revisit this site, make some changes to it, some tweaks to it, based on the needs of our teacher teams. Now, we are, we see, we do have time. I wanted, and this is specifically for any board member that wasn't here last time. You might be saying, what's this look like? What are these teams doing, Janelle? And those of you that have been part of the project, have attended other meetings with me, we've shared this video clip, I've shared this video clip with many of your districts when they were requesting it. But I want you to think about, when we're doing this work of collaboration, remember, we want, we're doing it to impact student learning. So we, I want you to think about it through these lenses. Really, what is the team doing that will have an impact on student learning? What is the team doing that will actually have an impact on the professional practice for the adults? And then, you should be thinking, are there some district systems in place that will impact the work of the team? District systems that will be the reciprocal accountability of those teams being successful. So you're going to see, I want to make sure I have my volume on here. You're going to see, this is a third-grade team, and I know there are districts that are working on finding time for their teams to do this work right now. I had a conversation with Pullman yesterday, they're working on finding time for their teams to do this important work. In White River, our teams do this work on Monday morning. So this is a Monday morning where we were running the video clip through the school, and we walked in onto this team, and you're going to be able to listen and hear the conversation. But again, be thinking about, what are they doing that will have an impact on student learning? How are they going to be better? And are there some district systems that you think, you know what, the district has a powerful impact on this particular team and their effectiveness? Alright, so here we go, this is a third-grade team, regular Monday morning.
What misconceptions do we see in their work? So, I think that one of the big misconceptions that is consistent throughout this unit is that they're not giving specific examples to support their main ideas. They're giving in general things, like, it talks a lot about interesting animals, but not telling us specifically what interesting animal.
I have, I was thinking, she mentioned about just looking at the headache, and I think that was maybe the idea, yeah. So they were, they were proven, they knew it was the main idea, but they weren't proving it.
I think that they, they almost think that when they have the main idea, and they knew the train were interesting animals, then they were just telling us where it's sent at.
I think when you go to the paragraph, they're able to have their main idea, but when they do their details, they have a tough time elaborating and not just looking at the facts that you just mentioned about one of your kids. Yeah, it just sounds super choppy because they're just looking back versus naturally elaborating on that fact that they stated.
Not, I'm looking at, choosing not to add enough information, yeah.
Well, concept, so the reasoning difference needs to come up. I think that we just need to do more practice with like, small text, figuring out main ideas.
I think even giving them the main idea and asking them going back to just supporting it with details, knowing strategically aligned with the main idea that we give them.
Because a lot of the times too, they'll come up with their own main ideas that are not correct, and then they're like, there's nothing, I can't support it, like, how am I supposed to support it? So I think reiterating the fact that if your main idea cannot be supported from the text or you're having a hard time, it's probably not accurate.
You remember, we even had a group on, really closely understanding the question, understanding like, does it match my answer?
I was looking at Max, that question, that ostrich one, and I was wondering how they would prove it if he highlighted the sentence, and it says, it is larger than a human nature, the one that was smaller, you know, the opposite. But I was curious how they would prove it, and yeah, they just have to read. So in reading interventions, we are having, we're rotating classes, but we're doing a main idea practice and essential methods practice, right? Re-teaching, and then with our writing as well, we're focusing on main ideas. So just re-teaching and reviewing the formative, I think, first off. And then, reading intervention time will be spent re-teaching and re-practicing the idea.
And when we do that, I think we're figuring how to take, you know, help them, yeah?
That's why I like the seat of caring with the different class so much, because like, I mean, right away, even Michael came up to us because we both had taught the planner differently, like, not knowing, and then the kids came together, and then they were like, so Miss, Michelle said to do this, and you said do this, what should we do? So like, they're thinking about how they're doing things differently, she's talking about it. So they must have done that with, you know, transition words and everything too. There are a couple kids that I'm really concerned about. So you had mentioned Mason, my Ryan, God Zero. And we're very off on understanding, so I'm trying to think of what would be most efficient for them.
Yeah, and it's hard to decide, Mason is getting with his pre-work with Terry, where they are working on these skills, but I'm wondering if you need to have them work on the exact same close reads and having them then try and do it by themselves. Because accessing it by himself is not helping him at this point. Even just not answering the question with Terry, but just going through the text and taking notes and expressing and digging deeper into the text and accessing the questions by himself in class, see if you can be more successful.
And the two questions, you know, who were, what is it about? Like, actually having them write that down, and say, okay, who were, what is that, animal? Then, what about the animal? And then, like, then putting it together into a main idea sentence?
Yeah, and having them repeat that repeatedly.
Yes, with shift back to skills, go with skills, what are we going to do about it? So we have one week of intentional teaching before closing. We have looking forward, can we open that calendar? Next week, the twentieth, we have no school on Monday, so we have post-assessment on Tuesday. What misconceptions do we see in their work?
Okay, so we're going to take some time, but before we do, I often get the question, well, Janelle, that's elementary school, what about a high school? Well, guess what? So you had four third-grade teachers talking about English language art. The same thing would be happening at White River High School with four ninth-grade English teachers, or three 10th-grade English teachers, or five algebra teachers. They're talking about their kids and their learning, and they're talking about the strategies they're using. They're making decisions on behalf of all kids. So at the high school, it looks exactly the same, they're just talking about different content. Maybe it's the chemistry team, alright, maybe it's the, oh gosh, the 10th-grade ELA team. Maybe it's geometry. It's the content, but it's the adults having the conversation, taking ownership for student learning. So we're going to take about five minutes here, and maybe just a little less, but I want you to just engage in a conversation. Like, what did you see that team doing that will actually have an impact on student learning? Were they talking about the students, the standards that they were working on? How about improving their own professional practice? And did you notice some district systems that are in place that might help advance this work? So let's go ahead, and we're going to come back in about five minutes. Thank you.
We can't have five minutes because there's not going to be enough time to get the end of Janelle's piece. So I'm going to give you two. Go.
Alright, what'd you see? You're on mute, Susan.
So I actually had a question about when Roberta put in the chat that we use that same model that they were talking about, about giving each school their, you know, contributing their thoughts. And I was curious, is that like, is there a grade-level leader from each school? Or are all teachers involved in that conversation?
So all teachers are involved in that situation, but we do have a grade-level leader at each school. So that's a change that we made this year based on our very initial dive into this, is that we needed, we did a team leader for the district. So fourth grade did all the whole district, and so we changed to that so that there's a team leader at each building. Then, all those teachers at that grade level weigh in on developing the essential standards. Then, what will happen is that we'll take that list of standards as a school. What's tight is that they have to then come up with a system to align those vertically, from K to one, one to two. And then, but what's loose is their process for that. We're not going to decide that you have to have these teachers together. And then what they'll, then they'll bring that then to the district. And then the team leaders will come, represent their grade level from their school, and we will finalize what our essential standards are as a district.
Thank you for explaining that.
That's the two minutes.
Now, I want to just close with this piece before you have the opportunity to really work with your own district, your own guiding coalition that's been learning, they're working. And I know they're really excited to share what they've learned, share some of the products that they're generating. And one of the things that we know from this school board and superintendent team is that we want you to be the most effective team in the district. And one of the primary ways that organizations communicate what's truly valued, it's about the behaviors that are modeled. And then, what behaviors are modeled from the top-tier leadership positions? In a school district, that's the school board and superintendent. Should be, they should be modeling best practice for the entire district. They should constantly be asking, are the kids learning and how do we know? In our March session, one of the things that I'm going to share, first of all, you're going to see a video clip of certain snippets of our board meeting, where the board is celebrating kids, they're celebrating staff for doing the right work. Where we're looking at data together, where we're monitoring that strategic plan together. We'll see that in the board meeting. We're going to see some examples of district goals. So that's a piece, but constantly driving this work, being the most high-performing collaborative team in the district, the superintendent and the board. Now, part of that, as I said, it's, we do this work through the thoughtful goal-setting process as well as monitoring those goals, taking a look at the data. The data that answers the question, not the state assessment data, but the data along the way that's going to help us answer that question, are the students learning the essential standard inside this unit? Or maybe it's a benchmark assessment, where are they learning the essential standards that were taught during this quarter, first quarter or second quarter? We're creating that culture of continuous improvement. And when we look at our data, it tells us, wow, this is where we're working. We can validate inside that this is working for our kids. Or you know what, we have to make some adjustments in this particular area. Now, this is your time, and so we'll, I'm going to be turning this over to the superintendent. Just right about time, we promised we'll give you fifteen or so minutes. And if you have control of that, I will be hopping off because I had, I'm going to have, as I said earlier, cross the parking lot to my board meeting tonight. But we want this opportunity to, we want to take this time and give your district office, your guiding coalition the opportunity to share some accomplishments, some of the things that they're working on after each session. Maybe share some new learning. And in some cases, it might not be new learning, it's just that they're revisiting something that they already knew was important. Some of your districts are ready to share some products, to look at how you're determining essential standards. Maybe taking a look at, what does a principal leadership team meeting agenda look like? How are we taking the information from the guiding coalition and moving it to that principal's meeting? Some districts, depending on where they started in this process, are working with the school leadership team. So you're going to see some products. Also, we want the guiding coalition folks to be transparent. Share some of the challenges of this work. Finding time is a challenge. So how are we going about finding the necessary time to do this important work? And then sharing those next steps. So, again, thank you. I look forward to meeting with you again in March. I think Candace, if you want to pop that actual date in my, I think it's March 12th, but I'll have you pop that date inside the chat. And we will now turn it over to each school district, each superintendent and board.
Well, we have one minute left to summarize. Any questions, comments on your?
No, I'm thrilled that we signed up for this, it's pretty, it's pretty exciting.
It's very exciting, it's great work, it's a lot of work, but it's meaningful work, and I think it's where people are finding energy.
Allison's going to talk.
Sorry, just one reflection is, we're doing this at the same time as we are adopting the new collaborative literacy, essentially. So, I mean, that's good timing, but also it is another initiative, in a sense, that's coming at the same time because the teachers don't necessarily know that as well as they might. But maybe it's the perfect time to do it, just something I've noticed that it's keeping Grace popping, I'm sure.
She, yeah, and collaborative literacy is kind of starting to shift, just like Bridges did about this time last year. It's, we're starting to see some shift as people have learned more about it. And also, Johnny's taken on a lot more of that.
But I think that, I like to think of adoptions of materials are within the work because it's ensuring that we are teaching those essential standards. So it helps us to do that, doesn't ensure it. What ensures it is our instruction, so. Yeah.
And I, and I'll add, I think it'll help with our common assessments because some of those assessments are built into the both Bridges and collaborative literacy. So I think that actually might accelerate and be a little bit more efficient rather than having to come up with, developing some common assessments, they're there. All right, well, I will not keep you later, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and look forward to meeting with you again.
Thank you, this was actually very informative.
Thank you, so we'll, we'll keep informing you, and I made some notes at our next board meeting to share some, some of our evidence about what we're doing, so.
Perfect. Bye.
I'll see you later, Roberta.